Okay, so welcome everyone to our February Town Hall. We have some new people in attendance. We have a couple of people. But we have basically, our plan was today to get to introduce you to our new interim CEO Tammy, and then also to give you an update on cookies. So to get started, everyone, welcome Tammy Severino. You might have seen her a lot in the past, as she was formerly part of our board. But Tammy, I'll let you introduce yourself, and then we'll get started with some questions.
Well, good evening, everyone. I want to thank all of you who I have spoken to over the last bunch of weeks since I came on board. I know this group. I am, I'm a past troop leader for my oldest. I am the cookie mom still from my youngest. To my left, I actually have all the overs from my initial order sitting here that are slowly going out the door, which I'm very happy about, get my office back. And I've been on the board for several years. Girl Scouts has been part of my life since first grade when I was in Brooklyn. I started as a Brownie and worked my way up, and I love the organization and I'm thrilled to be here. So I'm happy to ask, to answer questions that either you have on the fly or some that have come in in advance. I will let you know that since we have the queens of cookies on the call with us, I think you're going to get better information from Jenna and Kelly. They're, they're so entrenched in it. I can answer a good number of them, but they're going to give you more robust answers. So the cookie questions, I am going to pass off to them. But the other questions I am here to take. And, and some of it, if it's not a question, if there's just some thoughts that you have, things that you want to share. I know this has been a really challenging year. I see it with my daughter's troop. It's not the same being, being distant. Nothing for the kids is the same right now from school to activities to, and, and Girl Scouts is no exception to that. So I am, I'm here to listen and I want to both share with you and learn from you. So, so thank you for being on the call, for taking the time. I know this is dinner for a lot of folks, so I appreciate that you're here. And, and we'll start now, I guess. So Jenna, I know you have some questions to toss at me.
Okay, so the first question we have came from Joanne, and she wants to know, she's looking forward to hearing what Girl Scout Council has planned this year.
Okay, well, we do have a lot of good things planned. There are some things that because of COVID, we're not taking as long range a look. We have the Adult Awards and, and our Silver and Gold Awards events firmly planned, venues booked and all that good stuff. But we can't right now because the venues can't sign a contract yet. So we're not sure if our events are going to be virtual or if they're going to be in person. Take, take the Adult Awards, for example. It's normally a 650 person event. I've been to it. It's a wonderful event. Everyone has such a good time, but even if the venues open, they're talking about by the end of the summer, a maximum of 150. So how do we do a 650 person event? So we're looking at ways to celebrate our adults and then get back to having an in-person event that, that's a more traditional event. When, you know, when things are a little safer and things can open up through the state and through Girl Scouts. But we are planning another, another Gold Award Ceremony. We did just have one for last year's girls. We did a virtual event. Some things virtually are fantastic. We actually had girls send in individual videos. And I encourage all of you, we made a beautiful video compilation, my thanks to all the mentors who, who led each section. But we are going to, for, starting with March 1st, for Women's History Month, we're going to feature one girl every day. We're going to spill into April because we have more than 31 that sent in our, sent in videos. I want each girl to be highlighted. So we don't want to have two on a given day. There'll be one every day until we have used every single video that came into us. And then after the last one, we will post the full compilation video. It will be long. Not super, super long, but it, it was a really wonderful moment at the Gold Award Ceremony. And we would like to have that, whether we do virtual or in-person events, there's going to be a video going forward. So some things that we're taking from technology, we will build in. We are looking at building our Juliet program a little more. Some girls may down the road just be serviced better outside the troop setting. We want to meet girls wherever they are. Even some of our council programs that we normally do, whether it's at EDI or in COMAC, we want to offer the ability to dial in if someone's parents aren't home early enough to get her to a program. Or maybe she's someone who's learning from home because she's not well. She should be able to have that Girl Scout experience. So we're going to hybridize certain things. We are looking to bring camp back this summer. I'm very excited about that. My daughter is a camp EDI girl. We are going to have to make some modifications to accommodate the COVID regulations. So we are not going to offer sleep away. And we will likely not be able to accommodate the Pixie Girls because we'll be doing nothing but trying to keep their masks on them all day in the heat. But we are going to have everyone from kindergarten on up. We are going to try to, because there's going to be certain accommodations that take things away. We want to make sure we're giving as well. So we're looking to make sure that archery is part of the program. It's not a pay extra. We are probably going to lengthen the day since we're not going to have the troops, the, the, the groups of girls are not going to be able to mix. We're going to try and keep them like as family units, almost like a pod, like we've been doing all through COVID. So if you are in third grade and you're with your third grade pod, we don't want, if your mom or dad needs to drop you off early or pick you up late, we don't want to mix the groups in the morning or the afternoon. So parents for that same price point can choose to do the nine to 4:30, or you can drop your daughter off at eight, or you can pick her up at six. You can do both. You can make use of it sometimes, but not all the time. But we want to make sure that we're providing that extra service. There won't be an extra cost for it. We're working out all of the intricacies of how do we make Gaga Ball stay safe? How do we do the swimming and swim lessons and keep them safe? So there's going to be a whole bunch of details that are going to roll out over the next month. But camp will likely be coming back unless something unforeseen. That's why I'm saying likely. And we will also offer a hybrid option. So that girls whose parents are not comfortable or they have a situation at home where someone is compromised medically and they can't come to camp, they can do the programs online and we'll break them up in clusters over the course of the day by, by age. So it'll be a shorter day. Obviously, it'll be that 45 minutes to an hour like we did last summer. But it'll give your child something to be able to participate in through Girl Scouts, through the summer in a virtual way. So that's another thing we have planned. There is a secret something. I'm not allowed to say what it is, but it is going to be announced by GS USA in just a couple of days. Everyone on, who is participating in the staff summit, found out about it yesterday. It is a partnership that is going to be introduced by, with someone who is remarkable and someone I admire personally. And you all know her name and it will be announced. Jenna, did they say what day they're announcing? I think it's the, either the end of this week or next week. And it's a huge press thing that, that GS USA is doing. So all I can do is give you a breadcrumb. That's something fabulous is coming and it's coming in the next couple of weeks. But they're going to announce that. I'm trying to think of what else we have. We, we're really looking at expanding all of our programming, all of our offerings to the girls. The, the baking programs have been fantastic. There's going to be a baking program that is using Girl Scout cookies. There are going to be STEM programs, all kinds of things that we're doing. And we're trying to mix it up where we have programs that'll be for older girls as well as the programs that are for Arcata three K to four girls. And for our girls who are right in the middle there so that they're, you know, if you're, if you were six, you don't necessarily want to be on with someone who's 16 and vice versa. So we're going to try to have a programming that is really age appropriate, that can take things to the next steps as the girls get older. I do see a question here of whether or not I foresee trips. I was on today with seven other CEOs from all over New York State, from DC, Baltimore, Jersey, all around that way. Right now, none of us are allowing trips. We are all monitoring the guidelines and, and the numbers in our counties really carefully. Just a few weeks ago, Suffolk County was at 11.7. That's a scary, scary rate. We're just about at 4% now. So things are coming down. I know the numbers are ticking back up this week because two weeks ago was the Super Bowl. So I'm not surprised about that. But I am hoping that if, if Suffolk continues to come down, that we will be able to announce that trips will be possible. I don't want to say yes right now because I don't want to promise what I can't give. But if it is safe enough to do it, I will allow it. I have a question here. I'm trying to open it up to see what it says here. New York State just opened up youth camping. Can we take our girls camping? It is a trip. So unfortunately, not yet. But we, we do foresee that over, by the, by the spring, as things warm up, that more options will open up to the girls. I just can't promise yet when. I am hopeful that warmer weather, you'll be able to have meetings outside. You'd be able to congregate in, in warmer places. One of the CEOs said that the troops are actually meeting at these places. It's like an outdoor shelter with a fire pit and they're bundled up to the nines. And I'm thinking, do we have any of those in Suffolk? Because the girls can do that for an outdoor meeting. I'd freeze, but you know, but some girls are okay with the cold. If there are outdoor places that you feel the girls would be able to handle the cold, you can bring them together outdoors. It's just not as much, it's not as comfortable as in May. But as soon as, we're, we're probably, as the CEOs, all the downstate CEOs are likely going to start opening up in tandem. When, with the five boroughs, Westchester and Rockland, Nassau, Suffolk, North Jersey, South Connecticut, we'll probably all make those decisions because our circumstances are very similar. Up in Western New York, they, they've, their rates have stayed low all throughout the pandemic. But ours jumped really, really high. So we just want to make sure that we're making decisions that are respectful and comprehensive that we're taking into consideration. There's 100 million Americans with a pre-existing condition. I know a lot of parents are nervous. So I want to make sure that we're doing things that don't exclude anyone from a troop from being able to say, I can go too. So we're just trying to really make safe and smart decisions. And as, as soon as it is safe to say, yes, you can have a trip, then by all means, and that will include booth sales. Because as soon as the trips are open, the booth sales will be open. Yes, you can have an outdoor meeting, Dawn. The outdoors is fine. It's just cold. If your girls can, can do it, absolutely. Yes, right now you can have an outdoor meeting. I would be, one more. Could we relax? What do we got here? Restrictions on allowing meetings in the leader's backyard. I understand that. And, and yes, I've seen sketchy people around the parks too. That is, that has more to do with our insurance of what we're allowed to say yes to because of the insurance policies that Girl Scouts USA and Girl Scouts Suffolk and, and all the councils have to abide by. The family locations can be more challenging. And you may, you know, and if, if even one girl is unable to come to your house because her parents aren't comfortable with it because of COVID, it's a problem. It, there are all kinds of potential issues in the houses, in the backyards. That's why the public settings, the local parks or the, the school property outdoors, like a school park are okay. Or an outdoor space that's not a park space is fine if the, if the, if the owner of the spaces is open to it. But the, the backyards are really risky or, or insurance company is really putting the brakes on that for us, unfortunately. I wish I could say yes to that. Okay, I am positive I didn't answer everybody's questions. What else you have there? I know they have to be.
So you got, you got a lot of it with that. That was good. So there is a question. If parents signed a COVID waiver, removing GSSC from liability and the child were to contact the illness, would we consider a similar waiver to allow me, okay, that one was.
That's the backyard. That's the backyard.
Yeah. And we talked about the trips. For that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hopeful that before the school year is over, that the trips will be doable. I'm hoping that by April, I will be able to say yes. I just have to watch those numbers and, and see what the states allowing, what the schools are allowing, and then what, and what GS USA is advising. And, and like I said, I am meeting with my colleagues in the other councils because their circumstances are so much like ours that we can really collectively make the same decisions. And open it up for, you know, for all the girls across the, you know, our, our area at the same time.
I think there was just one more asking about when we would resume in-person meetings. So right now we're doing the in-person meetings, but just outdoors.
Outdoors, yes. And then, and that'll be the same thing as with the trips where we're looking. Right now, I know many, many that probably the vast majority of troops meet in schools and the schools won't let us come in right now. I'm really, I have my fingers crossed that we'll be able to talk to the districts and be able to get back in for the fall. So that, whereas this year is just, you know, it's, it's a wonky year, but that by the fall, we'll be able to get back in, whether it's a school cafeteria or whatever space within the buildings that you're meeting in, that the girls can resume. There will likely be mask wearing and, and things like that even in the fall. But at least they can come back in with whatever modifications in the building will, will need to, you know, happen.
So I think that was it for the ones that were kind of sent beforehand and then already kind of answered off.
I've taken the ones that were in the chat. Does anybody else have any other kinds of questions that they want to throw at me? I would like to just ask all of you going forward and, and you know, I'm only been doing this a couple of weeks. As I get better entrenched in this, I will have more information. I'll be able to answer things very specifically as, as I become more well-versed in it. But if, if having me here, whether it's once a quarter or once a month, whatever you would like to, to answer questions, to hear your feedback, if that's of benefit to you, I am happy to do that. So give some thought to whether or not having me here to, to hear what you, you know, what you're thinking, what's going on in each of the different service units or across the county. And not only that, by, by hearing what you've got going on in, you know, in one particular community, we may have great ideas to then share with other communities that can benefit from you. Would I ever consider joining a virtual troop? Absolutely, absolutely. If I could, yeah, if, if the, the. I love Woo Hoo. Woo Hoo is a personal favorite of mine. So thank you for that. But yes, I would, I'd be happy to. I've been asked, a couple of service units and troops have asked if I would be able to, to come, and I would be happy to do that. You're opening yourself up now. Yeah, I know that. I'm well aware of it. And I can't get to every single troop, which is why, you know, if there is something that's going on on a more service unit level where, where the service units providing something, that, that would be something because then I can talk to lots of troops at the same time. But if there's, you know, if there are activities or if there is a really special troop meeting that's going on that they, that, you know, that's a troop asked and I have the day free, I'm happy to be there. So absolutely. So, but thank you, Barbara. I appreciate that warning. Anybody else have anything for me? I was looking to see if anything else popped up. Okay, so I'm going to lift. Oh. Thank you. Barbara said that she, that you appreciate it and promised not to take advantage. And, and I'm with a giggle at the end. So I, I appreciate that. But look, you need to, you need to be able to get a hold of me when you have things that you need to share, talk about, whether it's a good something or a not-so-good something. And I know that you, you know, you, you, you take this role on. You get the good, the bad and the ugly. I love Girl Scouts, so I love all of Girl Scouts and that includes the good, the bad and the ugly. So I need to hear from you because, you know, I can come with a lot of ideas. Our team is fantastic, as, as you ladies all know and, and men. And, but more people are more ideas. And, and you're the ones implementing those ideas with the girls, in the service units, in the troops on a daily basis. So something you may have, you know, something may spark an idea that I just would never have encountered. So that's why I, I want you to have access to me. And, and I try to be very focused. If someone calls and I'm talking to you, I don't answer the call. I, I get back to them afterwards, but when I tell you, you have my attention, you have my attention. So, and I am grateful for all of you. Girl Scouts only happens because we have adult leaders who step up in the community and become troop leaders and give of their time and a lot of their time. I know my daughter's troop leader, how much time she gives. I know what our service unit folks are doing. I picked up our cookies just a few days ago. It was the most well-oiled machine. I, I challenge any corporation to do it as smoothly as, as, as our moms and dads do with the cookie distribution. So, and the girls do learn real practical lessons selling these cookies and they taste so good. So, you know, but I, I'm very grateful for all of you and, and appreciate that you had me here tonight. And like I said, I'm happy to come to you and I'm happy to come back here. If you want to have me on a regular basis to just share ideas, thoughts, conversations, that, that's what, that's what I'm responsible to do. So I thank you. Any other questions for me or is that, what's in this Q and A here? Oh, well, thank you, Christine. I appreciate that. This was just, I have a box of thins that was, oh, that one. All right. So Denise, all cookie questions, like I said before, because you just got on here. You have the cookie pros. You have Kelly, you have Jenna. So all the cookie questions I am passing over that way because they're going to be able to answer. But I happen to know because I have seen a crushed box before, and yes, they will get you a new box. But, but that's it. I'm, I'm just, like I said, I am, yes, you do have the best cookie people. So that was a comment that came up. I'm really happy to have, have all of you on my side. So I thank you. You may not always agree with the things that I give you as answers. I am doing my very best. I promise you that. That's a commitment I'll make to you, that I will always do my best. Keeping in mind that at the end of the day, this is all about our girls. And, and that's what it's about. And that's why it's been here so long because we stay focused on the fact that it is about our girls and, and shaping them to be fabulous women of the future. So I thank you.
We had one more. Donna, Raina just sent one in. Okay. It's about, so she kind of answered it, but yes. Any chance we could have you join a virtual meeting for a service unit for Scouts and Parents?
Yes. I have a feeling that you have, your service unit meetings are going to end up a little bit on top of each other. So just give me as much notice as possible. So I block that time for you. And then if I can't make it, give me the following meeting and I'll get to that one. But yes, I will get to whoever asks. I will try and get to as many of them as I can. Even if it spills, you know, once we get to June, if it spills into the fall, when you guys start up meeting again, I will keep coming to meetings. Okay, so I see Jackie is signing on. So the summit must have just come to a close. And I am going to say goodnight and thank you one more time. Have a great rest of the meeting. Learn lots of stuff about cookies and, and thank you for selling them and having the girls out there selling them as well. So thank you, everyone.
Okay. So I hope you all enjoyed talking to Tammy and, and her answers to your questions. Again, we're going to record this for tonight. So if you didn't, if you have a friend that didn't get to see it, we'll have that posted. Because it's some great information that she gave us. So right next, we're going to start with cookies since a lot of you are here to talk about cookies. I mean, you know, cookies, it's, it's not that big of a deal, right? Yeah, so Kelly is here and she's good. We have a little PowerPoint that we're going to go through that we kind of compiled the questions that were sent beforehand. And then we have Melissa Metusek, who is going to present some social media sharing that she's been doing as well. So let me just share my screen.
And is a share. I said Jen is a share.
Okay. Oh, wait. Sorry, I was, I have two PowerPoints up so that we could go over them and I was clicking on that one. But you couldn't see it. Okay. We good? Kelly, I want you to know that every time you send me a PowerPoint, it has that song on there.
Dynamite? I can't get it off. I can't find it. Like it's, I can't find it when I go to take it out. But it's a good song. So that's.
I always play it before we start. Okay.
Yeah, it's a good song. Okay, so Girl Scout Cookies. Um, so this is where we're at right now. This is what I'm calling as the state of the sale. Our initial sale was down 30% from last year. But digital cookie is up over 51% from where we ended 2020. When Jenna and I came up with the numbers for this year, we kind of figured we'd be down. So 30% is not making, like, I'm not under my desk in the fetal position just quite yet. So that's the great place to be, especially, you know, in the world we're in right now. Girls have created more sites than last year. More girls have DOC. Customers are ordering more boxes per order. And I think because of the way the world is in right now, we're not getting many complaints about the shipping. Because I think people realize, you know, it's either shipping or you might not get a cookie. You know, so unfortunately, because we're a nonprofit, there, there's, there's not too much wiggle room with free shipping. But you know, not, you never know in the future. Okay, so Operation Cookie is only down 7% from where we ended last year. And it's not even March. Okay, so that's going fantastic. We're going to give a big push for Operation Cookie in a couple of weeks. And you'll, you guys will see that you'll be on the front lines with us, you know, doing that. We're going to come up with some stuff for you guys to share, but not ready yet. Standabout, I, I just have to say, who knew? Okay, because we have done, there have been over 300 standabouts picked up in under a month. That's insane. I mean, boot sales, I can understand. You know, we would have like, you know, because a boot sale is a boot sale. You know that you're going to sell a lot, you know, standing outside of Home Depot, you know. But 300 standabouts, that is commitment from your families. And that's something I think a lot of people felt that we were lacking in past years. So this is really a fantastic thing to see is the families really taking the reins when it comes to their girls selling and participating. So I think this is like a double win, you know, right then and there. Contactless cupboard is something we have really started to push. We did it in fall. We've, we've tweaked it a little bit and got it even better for cookies. So basically, I think most of you probably know, you, you could download the eBuddy troop app. You could do it on a PC and you place your catch-up order in eBuddy. It is there waiting for you. Hopefully, we had some tweaks that we had to tweak, you know, you know, change a little bit of settings. Because at one point, there could be 40 people who pick 10 o'clock. So.
Everybody who was there on Saturday at COMAC, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we did fix that, you know, because it's new to us too, using this feature. So we did fix that. So hopefully that won't happen again. But it will limit the amount of orders that can come out in a day. So just keep that in mind. You want to get your orders in as soon as you can. Okay? Slide please. Okay, some updates about fall. So thank, the funny thing is, is they keep sending us these funny little, little cards with like a sloth, like swimming in the ocean. I, I don't know. I'm a little. But um, they had to reorder some of the rewards and they come over from overseas. So right now they are on a boat. And we just got an update that there is high traffic in the ports. So it's taking a little bit longer than they thought to get through customs. So I was hoping for the end of the month that you guys would see them. It's probably going to be a couple more weeks. So, because they have to clear customs and then get to the warehouse where they distribute them. So they're coming and they have told us and, and really ensured us that hopefully this will not happen again. You know, they, I think, I mean. You know, they, I think, I mean, just like everybody with COVID, I think they thought the sale wasn't going to go as well as it did. So they, I think they ordered less, and then when all of a sudden everybody was selling and everybody was hitting these high marks, they panicked and placed another order. But unfortunately, when you order from overseas, it just takes a long time, okay? So um hopefully, they'll take that error into account and, you know, make it a positive for years to come. Um I think Tammy kind of probably hit on this a little bit. Uh we are still waiting to decide on boot sales. Um once trips are approved, then boot sales will most likely be approved with that. Um as as Tammy said, we monitor the numbers, and as soon as we feel like it's safe enough, um the girls will be permitted to do boot sales. So as of right now, we're still in standabout mode. So here is a video to talk about cupboard transactions.
Can you hear it?
No.
Okay, sorry, I have my headphones in. Okay. We'll try it again. Hear it now?
No.
Well, it's low. Can you wait? Hold on. Yes? Go to Sorry. I wanted it to be big. Go to gssc.us, then Cookies and More, scroll down till you get to Cookie Cupboards. Then you'll see Standabouts. Click here to make an appointment. Your info, select your cupboard, date and time. Use the memo line for request requests, like if you want extra of a certain cookie, and then sign your electronic signature. You have two weeks to sell the product. Let us know if you need more time. If you're standing about online at gssc.us. If cookies you didn't sell, select Make Return Appointment. If you sold out, email us so that we can allocate the product to the Girl Scout you specified in your request. And now let's look at the new process for requesting a catch-up order. You can choose your date and time for pickup. We'll know what you need before you arrive. We release the product to you in the system, so you can allocate right away and no paperwork is necessary. Your eBuddy dashboard, click the Transactions tab, then Add a Transaction. Select the cupboard you want with the date and time, the hours of operation are listed, and then fill out your order in cases for boxes booked. Top left to see the menu, click Cookies, or click the Cookie icon at the bottom of the screen. Click Troop Transactions, and then on the top right, you'll see a plus sign. Select your cupboard with your date and time, then add your cookie varieties, and click Create. On the day of pickup, please arrive on time. Interactions may have limited contact. Yes, that everyone went first to coverings and then you park in one of the cupboard spots. If no one's outside, call the number in all accounts. Confirm your product in the mobile app, click Calendar, then confirm order, then confirm pickup, then okay. Confirmation email is sent to all eBuddy users for your truth, and now you can allocate the product to your room. To confirm your pickup on the desktop version, click TXN Pickups. And then it's the same process. Nemo goes out to all your users and you can allocate the product to the girl. And that's it. Summer hours are posted on our website, and if you have questions, email us at productsales@gssc.us. Okay, so next is the quick little standabout video. Do that real quick. You just have to excuse, I like the songs. I add them to everything.
Thank you, Jenna. Those are very informative. Um we're gonna, we're gonna forward out to you this PowerPoint, um and those videos should be included, I believe, in it. Um and that way you could share this stuff with either your parents or your service units. Um and that way, it's all in one spot for you. Um so Cookie Chat, I've extended some more dates for March. Um we're thinking about changing one of the March dates to be like a uh half a Cookie Rookie, like where we're at now. So um just be on the lookout for that, a little bit more information. Um so Cookie Chat with Kelly, there's that, it's actually tomorrow night. I'll probably just be using the same presentation, um and because it's it's very informative and, you know, hopefully it won't be the same people. Okay, so sign that, sign on up and join us. Okay, so here's some of the cookie questions that came in through your forums as you signed on. Uh what will be the the cookie flavors for next year? So what we do know is we are going to be getting a new cookie next year, but we will not be losing any. So um what G S U S A is looking to do is have us have the same amount of cookies per bakery. So I believe ABC has nine right now, and we only have eight. So um they will be coming up with a new cookie, but they literally embargo it to the point where we know, and we don't even know. We just been told that we're going to have a new cookie, so it is a mystery until it gets a little bit closer. Um how do we set up a meeting uh for for the cupboard? Um basically Jenna just did that um with her little videos and um we went through it before. You're going to set an appointment in eBuddy. Um if you don't have access to this, you can ask the troop leader or the troop cookie chair. Uh we just need to have a troop chair agreement on file for whoever has access to eBuddy. This just keeps us in the know, and you know what your responsibilities are when you have a a hand in the cookie program for a troop. So step one would really be to fill out your troop chair agreement. Um and then we can give, grant you access to eBuddy, where you then could follow the directions to place a cupboard order.
And Kelly added a feature on there um for this one, where they could be a troop cookie pickup only person. Um because there's, now there's an additional role there, where you can just be somebody that's picking up cookies, but then you wouldn't have the same access as the troop leader to the eBuddy site.
And that way, we also know who who's responsible for the troop and who's just picking up cookies. So if we have a question about what's going on with your troop, we're going to go for the troop cookie chair instead of just the troop pickup person, okay? Okay, so this has been a big hot question. Um how do we set up our troop site for our virtual booths? It's a little confusing. Um I found this, I I was trying to find an easy way to explain it to you guys. So I Googled it, and I found this video. It's from a different council, but it's a minute long and perfect. So um Jenna, do we want to show it?
We can.
Okay, it's literally only a minute, so don't panic.
To get your troop link set up, you'll first want to log into Digital Cookie. So you'll log in, you'll select the role, so you'll select your troop that you want to set up your link for. Continue. Then right here, you will see a new troop cookie site. Uh you'll click Start. You'll enter in your troop zip code, usually your meeting place. And select the troop lead. And then click Save. From here, your troop cookie site details were updated. You'll close. Then you'll see your status, your site URL, and then your details. You can always change the troop lead and zip code if needed. Um to set up the site URL, you will have to then log out. Log back in, and you will now see a parent role. Continue. You will then have to go through all the videos, sign the pledge and the terms and conditions, and set up your girl's troop site. Like you would just for a normal girl, and then you'll be good to go. To get your to get your troop link.
Okay. And then there's instructions that are on Digital Cookie as well, and then there's a link that Kelly put in that'll bring you to like a PDF that'll take you step by step.
So it's it's a little confusing, but basically you're just putting in zip code, saying who's going to be in charge of, you know, who's going to be the parent of the fake troop girl. Um and then you're going to sign in as the parent and set it up just like you would for your own scout. So it's more confusing than it actually seems. Once you do it, you're like, oh, that's how you do it. So it has been a a hot question the last couple of weeks, um and it's working fantastic. I had a troop today. Um who asked me a question about it, and they already have, just from that, having their troop site set up, a hundred and ninety-one boxes of cookies. Um my twins troop, I just checked it today. I think we have like twenty-something. But for doing nothing, like the girls aren't, you know, it's like free cookies, you know, I mean. So it's really worth setting up your troop site, okay?
Little Brownie is doing some paid promotion right now, that you might have seen in your social media, where it says like, find cookies, and it'll take you directly to the troop link or to the cookie finder. Um so if you're, you might be getting ones that you didn't even know.
Yeah, exactly. It's it's really, it's really a nice feature this year. Um so next question, I'm new to volunteering and would love to learn more about cookies. So we did do a training um back in, I believe it was December, called Cookie Rookie. Okay, so that has been recorded and is on our website, under the Cookies and More section, and then for volunteers, and then training. Um so it's a little lengthy, because it's a live training of me going through like step-by-step everything you do. Um so like I said earlier, we're going to probably take one of our cookie chats and turn it into like a Cookie 101, you know, from this point on, like I'll eliminate initial sale. And we'll just go on to how you work a ketchup sale and a standabout right now, so.
And Cole's going to post it on the calendar soon, so you might, she might be doing this.
Yeah, so I mean, so that'll be another good tool to hop on, but in your free time, if anybody actually has free time. Um I don't. Um you could start looking at the Cookie Rookie trading, you know, take it in bits and pieces. You know, and start looking at that. Write down your questions and then just email us your questions. Uh when and how do we get our deposit slips? Um Melinda has been working on your deposit slips and coordinating with your service unit cookie chairs to pick them up. Um so we're trying to, there's still um a couple, maybe more than a couple, that are still in the office that haven't been picked up yet. So she's working on that. We're a little short-staffed in Comac. We don't have any cupboard help. So um literally, where the cupboard help? So um sometimes our our emails and our phone calls don't get answered as 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 fast as they used to, as everybody was used to the way we answer. Um so please just be patient with us on that. I've also been out of the office for a couple of weeks, um had to quarantine. Um so Melinda was picking up a lot of slack, as was Jenna, so I thank you for that, and I thank everybody for their patience, but if your service unit should be getting their their deposit slips, okay? So um if for some reason you need an extra one, feel free to email us. We're more than happy to put some in the mail to you. Okay, so here's the next, the next hot one that's going to start coming up, is how do you allocate the ketchup orders or the extra cookies from initial sale? So if you didn't round down on initial sale, you had some extra cookies. Once I hit Submit for your initial sale, all those extra cookies carry over into the Girl Order tab, okay? So what you do from there is you just assign them like you would a ketchup order. So between ketchup orders, um Standabout Council is assigning to the girl, because it's for a family, so it's a specific girl. Uh if we do boot sales, you would have to allocate boot sales. Um but um Jenna made a really nice PowerPoint here. Um that'll take you step by step on how to do an allocation to cookies. Um Okay, how often, how long can I keep, can I enter transactions, pick up at the cupboard? Um the sale ends May fourth, so we could, we'd love to see you every day, so come on down. Jen is choking. Uh there are people that like to come down quite often, but we are open till May fourth, so you could come down anytime between those during operating hours and um pick up orders at the cupboards. Please just, of course, make sure you make an appointment. Uh we are trying our best to keep, you know, to the appointments and things like that. Um like I said earlier, just bear with us, we're we're quite shorthanded and trying to juggle fifteen different things at once. But um but yeah, so keep selling. It's it ends May fourth. We got time. Uh this was, this has been a hot question too. If our troop has left with cookies, we'll counsel take them back. So this year was a little, um we had a little hiccup at the beginning with Digital Cookie. Because so many people were using Digital Cookie, um it slowed down the flow from Digital Cookie into eBuddy. So I had people not hitting Submit and just hitting Save, so the flow wouldn't stop. If you hit Submit, it would halt that flow, so if someone bought something in between that little window, um the girls wouldn't get credit for it. So what we're asking is, is right now, we're not taking cookies back at this very moment, okay? But we're asking you to use them for ketchup orders, for standabouts, um for anything like that. Um and then we'll revisit this issue in April, okay? We'll see where we're at, and we'll we'll see if people still need us to possibly take some of the cookies back. But you know, we're just asking if you could try your best to try to get rid of them. If you can't, and you've tried and tried and tried, we'll we'll work something out. We're we're not going to make you pay out of pocket or anything like that. Please keep in mind too, that we do allow you to swap flavors, okay? So if you ended up with eleven lemons or eleven toffee, and you really want Thin Mints and C Mo's, because they're hot sellers, come down to the cupboard, shoot me an email. That way I can, I usually try to give them a heads up that you're coming. Um and then come down during operating hours. You might have to wait a couple minutes if, because I I don't want to create another sheet for appointments and swapping. I think, I I think I've killed the woo-foo land. Um and swapping is usually pretty quick, so even if you want them to do a ketchup order and bring your swap with you, that's fine too. Uh but we'll swap them out for you, you know, so you you can sell the the hotter cookies that'll maybe sell a little bit faster. If we sell leftover boxes from initials, how do we enter them in E to E, blah blah, into eBuddy? Um it's, we talked about this a little bit before, it's the allocation. So just like um if you picked up a ketchup order, or you know, if you did a booth sale, um you would allocate the cookies just like you would for the extras that come over from your initial sale. So we are going to get um So we are going to get those directions on the website, the GSSC website soon. Okay, just bear with us where we kind of attacked the communications department and we tried to give them a breather of a day and then we attack again, so.
Early morning.
Yeah, you know. Can parents pay their bill online? Of course they can. On our website, I think this was in a video too for the standabouts. You go to our website, you click on Cookies and More and right at the bottom it says pay troop bill. That is where we're asking people to pay for their standabouts. And you could definitely share this with your parents if you want them to pay their bill there. So that's perfectly fine. And then what happens is I print up the form and I manually put it into eBuddy. It's not instantaneous, so if they pay it, it's not gonna flow into eBuddy. You have to give me a a hot minute to like print it and like put it in. But it's pretty much up to date as of today. And always, I just, I just always, I always like to thank you guys for coming because you're taking time away from your families. Thank you for joining us tonight and thank you for everything you do, especially in product sale land. We know how much work it is, you know, for parents to help their children. And for troops to, you know, help their girls sell. So we do appreciate it and I just always like to say that. I am going to just go into our chat log and Melissa, the floor is yours.
Do you want to answer the questions first?
No, I'll answer them in the chat log. You do your presentation.
Okay. Hi, my name's Melissa. I'm a Girl Scout leader and this is my thirteenth and final year. I pretty much have been doing my girls' cookie sales all thirteen years except for maybe one or two years. So Kelly asked me to do some social media stuff of what we've been doing and I'm gonna share my screen and show you what we've been doing or what I've been doing. Okay, so I've just been like looking to see what others are doing through the other Facebook pages. And obviously Bernie Sanders was a huge hit with his gloves, so on the left of your screen was the one that I found and then I did one with my daughter. This picture is actually from, the picture of her is from last year when we were trying to get rid of the last of our cookies. You know. Made it with Bernie. One thing, if you are gonna do a social media post, post the prices because people ask and ask and ask how much, how much? And you know, you posted, they will ask. Be funny, you know. Both, you know, make it a bit, make things available. One of the things that we, I have seen is the pairing, the wine pairing. I've never tried it. So if you can find it, everything can be very easily found online. I can show you if that goes away. Sorry, I need to get this thing to go away. I don't know how to get it to share, to show it. But it's a wine pair. It's what cookies go with what wine and you know, I know there's a beer one too. I wasn't able to find that one, but if you look, you'll find it, you know, posted and people say, hey, you know. Maybe I need some cookies to have with my glass of wine. You have to go in and do in a standabout or a long day at work or just the kids driving you up the wall. You know how you feel. Here's another one. This was all kinds of desserts that you can make with cookies. I shared it and, you know. Might need some boxes of cookies to make something. I know I've done like brownies with the thin mints or with cheesecake with some thin mints in it. Or something you can do. This was a big hit. When I posted this, we had a huge amount of sales pop up. A lot of donations, you know, definitely push, you know, hey, you know, you don't wanna, you don't want cookies. I get it. It's lent. You know, you're on a diet, you know, donate a box or two, you know, you can push it and, you know, you hope for a few boxes and this year my daughter did amazing with donations, more than she's ever done. We usually, you know, with the digital cookie, we'll get a few donations, but not many this year. I think she had like five times as many as she's ever had before, which was nice. And then this is our newest one. You know, you can't buy cookies in Mars, so you know, don't go there and, you know. So you know, you sort of wrote the Land Rover was just recently. You know, they were talking about it in the news, so you know, we did a little thing like this. And you might say, okay, I'm doing all this as a parent and not the girl, but my daughter is responsible for the money. She's responsible for pulling the orders out and she's responsible for greeting the people who are coming to pick up their orders or we deliver sometimes. When we do do delivers, we ask people to donate a box and we will bring them to Stony Brook. I know someone who works there and, you know, they'll bring them up. I think that's it. That was all my pictures. But you can post in local on Facebook pages, like your mom's groups and, no, wait a minute. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought Kelly was shushing me. She's probably shushing a cat. So, you know, just, you know, do what you can. It's hard, you know, we're, we're not doing nearly as much as we have done in the past. You know, usually my daughter sends around a thousand boxes and this year we're not even close, so we're working on it. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Melissa.
You're welcome.
That was great, Melissa. Thank you for sharing all your, your knowledge. I happen to be, we and Melissa were talking about something else one day and I happened to, just, I was on Facebook and I'm like, yeah, let me look up her Facebook page. And I was like, wow, I'm like, these, they, they're not just the normal buy cookies, buy cookies, buy cookies, you know. She had some really great posts, which made me think of when they said they wanted someone to talk on tonight. I said, Melissa's it. I said, call Melissa. I said, it just rang a bell. I was like, this is fantastic.
Yeah, ma- make it funny, you know, you gotta make it pop out and you gotta hope for a few boxes here and there and you can offer delivery, you know, offer it. I know la- last year when we did close down and we had boxes that I had left over for a booth, I offered up delivery and like, oh, people like, you know. Went nuts and, you know, we got everything gone after I emailed Kelly. Kelly, what do I do with these cookies? And we got rid of them all. And then I emailed her a couple of weeks later, Kelly, I need more cookies.
Yeah, so I mean, people write off the bat, like, how do I return these? You don't, just really, you're probably gonna use all your extra cookies for ketchup orders and stuff. So that's why I'm saying it's not that it's not an option in the future, but for right now, it's just not an option right this second. We're gonna see where everybody falls come like April. And, you know, we'll definitely come up with a system and and figure it out. You know, we don't want anybody to have to pay out of pocket for something that they couldn't help because it was a digital order and they couldn't round them down. So we will come up with something, but I just wanted to, you know, as of right now, let's try to sell them. You know, we're still in the, the, you know, the meat of the sale, so let's, let's see what we can do and then we'll, we'll take it from there.
So there's a couple more questions in the log. Do you want to run through them real quick so we don't have to?
Yes, okay.
Somebody wants access to the graphic that you found, Melissa. With the cookies with for heroes.
It's, it's online. It's online. Just search for, you'll find it. If not, um.
I've seen it a million times. It's on there.
Yeah, you know, if you, if you're looking for anything, just search for, you'll find it. If you can go on to the Girl Scout Gab Facebook page. They, they post stuff constantly. That's where I steal most of my stuff. You know, that's Bernie Sanders stuff come because I saw people posting and posting and posting. I was like, you know what? We gotta do one too. And, you know, that's what we came up with and if people loved it, it was funny and we got a few orders from it. So, you know, not many, but, you know. But we're working on it, working on it.
Okay, so someone just mentioned she thought that we couldn't post on mom's groups. We can post on mom's groups. We can't post on marketplace groups. So anything that has like, you know, for sale or yard sale or Facebook Marketplace or, you know, things like that cannot go. Facebook has, the GSUSA tells us to make sure when you're posting on your personal page, don't use the dollar sign. Because sometimes it automatically carries it over to Facebook Marketplace. Because it sees the dollar sign. So little tricks, you know, as we find them, we share them. I have something here in chat that said someone posted a video of their daughter delivering the cookies in a cookie monster suit. And they would dance for customers to see in the ring doorbell. It was very funny and I'm sure, hold on, my email popped up. I'm sure she's selling tons. I saw the video and it was hysterical. Like these little moves and, and she was trying to social distance, so she had this full suit on. So, you know, she didn't have to worry about really touching anybody. I'm sure her mother disinfected that thing with like a whole bottle of Lysol, but, um. But yeah, it was pretty cute. She really seemed, and I have to say, like, it really is, you know, we give you guys these, these I I'm sorry to say, but these walls sometimes because of what's going on. And you guys have climbed over them and then again climbed over the next wall. I mean, I had someone that, you know, for standabouts, we live on a dead end, you know, what can we do? So we put in our request and we got door hangers made for standabouts. So now you can let your neighbors know the date and the time of your standabout, so they could come to your home and pick them up. I do not recommend putting this around town. I recommend keeping this to your, your block, you know, like people you know. I don't recommend giving out, you know, the fact that your address and stuff, but we literally just got done today. So it's on our website. They're gonna put it on the website so you can download these door hangers. Where it has a blank section where you can put your date, time and location. So that we could hang.
Says the troop. It doesn't say the daughters.
That's right. Yep, that's right. That's right. So I think that was, that became from a service unit. A service unit requested it. I didn't even think of it. You know, and she's like, can we get some tools? And I was like, yeah, we can. I said, why can't we? You know, so we thought door hanger was the safest for the neighborhood. So, you know, as you guys think of things, shoot me an email, you know, if if it's something we can do and make doable. We'll do it. You know, we're more than happy to. For the troop site, do we get a confirmation that it was successful or is there a way to check? You will see that on your site will say published. As long as your site says published, it's not instantaneous where you go to find cookie and put your zip code in and you're gonna pop up. It's not instant. You have to give them time because it's gotta go through like three systems before it hits that system. It was the same way with boot sales. We told you if you didn't give us enough time, we couldn't get you on the, the, the cookie finder. Because it's not instant. So I usually tell people when they set it up, if they set it up at night, I say, tell them to check in the morning. Or if they did in the morning, I tell them to check when they get home from work. And it's nine times out of ten, I've never had someone say it's not there.
And you could see like the hyperlink on the top right-hand corner. So you could click on the hyperlink once it's published and you'll be able to see what the page looks like. So from that hyperlink, you know, you you'll see what the webpage looks like and then you can copy that. Right, so share the hyperlink. You can make it a QR code. You can use that in, you know, marketing that you're doing out to people. You can put that in your email.
Instant when you put your zip code in. So, you know, you, I had a couple of people, I don't see it, I don't see it, I don't see it. It's like, calm down. You know, give it some time because it literally has to go through three different systems in order to get uploaded there. So just don't freak out on that, okay? When is cookie money due? Is there a late fee? There's no late fee. It's not, you know, Capital One, you know, we're not, we're not credit card. We're not gonna charge you a late fee. But your cookie, your initial sale money is due two weeks from your delivery. So let's say you guys got your delivery on the tenth, so your, your, your initial sale money is due tomorrow. Am I coming to your door tomorrow? No. I am not coming to knock on your door and say, where's the cookie money? Don't worry. If you know you're gonna be like a week or two late, shoot me an email. Communication is key. You know, no one will harass you. Don't worry. Just make sure that we know that you're, you're working on it, maybe. Yeah, much later. But yeah, they do. They, they we're, we're so short-staffed, we're still trying to collect for fall, so just bear with us. So, yeah, so just make sure that, you know, you get it in a respectable time. If you had extra cookies on your initial sale. Don't worry about paying for those up, you know, with your initial sale money. I, I know that, you know what I mean? So don't worry. If you have an extra ten boxes, whatever you have extra, you don't have to lay the money out for those, okay? Wait till you sell them and then pay for them with like a ketchup water, okay? So most people feel like they have to pay the whole bill, like, don't, don't. It's a, it's a unique little year this year, so let's just, we're not gonna make you do anything like that. Does it make sense to order extra for ketchup orders since it is so early in the sale period? I would not. My personal opinion was I would not order any extra ketchup orders. Ketchup orders are not returnable. Okay, initial sale is normally not returnable. The only time I'm gonna let people return is if I can look them up and see that they had extra on their initial sale. Okay, so ketchup orders are not returnable, so I would not take anything extra on there.
I would just take what you need. Like, instead do like a standabout. And then if you wanted to sell the product, then you can return whatever's left of that. So even if you're not doing a standabout, but you want extra cookies on hand because people are gonna call you an ass room, do it in the form of a standabout as opposed to a ketchup order. And then if you only want, yeah, if you only want thin mints, just put thin mints only in the memo line.
So yeah, that's definitely true, but I definitely would not take anything extra on the standabout. I mean, on a ketchup, excuse me. Does it include ketchup orders? I'm sorry, what? Because there was a girl that did not, did not do DOC only paper orders that I entered initially, but I do not see her on the list in the dashboard, so I'm worried that numbers might not be accurate. The list on the jet, okay, someone asked earlier how they could find a summary of who did digital cookie girl delivery. If you go to your, your dashboard in eBuddy, there's a box on the dashboard that says DOC girl delivery. And you click a little button in that box and it'll give you a little summary in another tab. It'll open up another tab. And it'll show you what each girl bought. It has nothing to do with paper orders. If you want to know what a girl's combined sales are for paper orders and digital cookie girl delivery. You just have to pull up her initial sale tab and look there. Okay, I have to look, there might be. I don't think it is. I was gonna say, I think there might be a delivery ticket feature, but for some reason I don't think there is. But I could double check that tomorrow and let everybody know. But the best way to do it is to go to that initial sale tab and see what their totals were. That's the most accurate place to look. Does the troop number appear on deposit slip like it does for the nut sale? Yes, it does. Bottom left-hand corner should be your troop number. So if it does not look like your troop number, do not use that deposit slip. Okay, let us know and hopefully your service unit didn't make a boo-boo and just hand them out randomly, okay? It happens sometimes. If a parent doesn't have the email to set up their girl's site, what can they do? They can email me. Tell them to email me and we will make sure that we have the correct email address in there. All the data is pulled from Salesforce and Salesforce has been a little wonky. You know, the new version, so we're having a little bit of hiccups with the new Salesforce, so if you think someone has not gotten the, the email, face, just shoot me an email. And with, with all their information and I will double check it all and resend it, okay? Because, you know, unfortunately, computers are never a hundred percent, just like people, so. Thank you. That helps, but doesn't include the cutbacks I did. So that's why I was wondering if there was a report that included the ketchup orders with the initial orders since I allocated them back in. I kinda get what you're going there. It doesn't, it's not gonna include the, the ones you rounded down for. What we usually do in Cookie Rookie is tell you to take a screenshot of handle the orders and take a screenshot and then make your adjustments. That way you know what your orders were to begin with. But if you need help with that, give us a call and we'll, we'll try to help you as best we can to figure out that for you, okay? Are you saying it's best to keep us stock? We go on weekends and see. You know, that's, a lot of people did that with walkabouts too, like, I, I mean, people think, they like to think that they get things over on us. But we ain't stupid, you know, so we know people do this, you know, but if that's works best for you and your sale and your, your scout, that's fine.
There's one from Amy about the initial bill, so about the credit.
Parents want to pay their initial bill, can they do that through the credit card like you said earlier? Of course they can. Just have them go to pay troop bill. I would tell them to, when they do it, in the memo section, put their child's name and write initial sale. Just so we have a record of what that payment was for, okay? What is considered initial sale? I only got the fifty-plus patches for half of my girls, but all sold over fifty. Whether it is via paper or digital cookie, it all counts. Everything counts. So just contact your service unit chair. So um, just contact your service unit chair. They should have extra patches. Um, and tell them what you need. If they have run out, then you let us know and we'll get you what you need. Does it make sense to order extra for ketchup? So I did that one. Um, it doesn't include ketchup orders. Initial sale is initial sale. So once initial sale is over, those rewards then go away. Okay, then that, that total actually, it's like double dip thing. Then that total carries over to the girl orders tab and then it starts going towards the final rewards. So you can use those cookies for initial rewards and you use those cookies again for final rewards. So like I said, it's kinda like a double dip. Um, so you can't do a catch-up and have it count towards initial sale. Um, if there was some sort of error and something happened and it's outside of the norm, then just let us know and we will figure something out, but on average, initial sales, initial sale. Um, any patches that finishes the cookie manager, do I pick them up at Comac for the service unit? Barbara, um, give Melinda a call tomorrow. She was handling them while I was out. Um, she probably has a whole bag for you with deposit slips and all your patches, okay? Um, and if for some reason you can't get her, um, try me. I should be in the office tomorrow. Um, American Girl Doll. So we're, we're trying to, if you haven't gotten your American Girl Doll yet, uh, we've actually, Jenna can be my witness. We were talking about this yesterday. Um, apparently we, we seem to be short a couple, even though we ordered them all. So I have a feeling that um, while the office was closed, they might have tried to deliver them. So either they went back to American Girl Doll or their city in FedEx. So um, as soon as I get my list together, um, one of my staff members is creating the list of exactly what we're missing. I'm gonna call American Girl and see where they are, cause um, they cashed all of our checks, so. Um, we should have them, but I think because of the offices being open and closed and open and closed, that it probably tried to get delivered, so we are doing our best to get them. Um, I don't think we're short too many, thank God. Um, but um, I think um, we are short, okay, uh, you know, a few. So we will work that out, I promise. I feel so bad, um, but with everything going on, I have a feeling they were trying to be, they were trying to deliver them and probably someone wasn't there. Um. Can she throw in some extra goodies for me?
There should be goodies in there, Barbara.
It's, it's. Department of goodies.
Uh, yeah, uh, okay, so that one's done.
Yeah, unfortunately, I mean, Jenna had a hard time too when we were ordering the rewards, um, getting laptops. The girls that earned the laptops, they had to wait quite a while too, because um, everybody was ordering laptops.
All those holes were ordering Chromebooks, so you couldn't get one.
Yeah, so I mean, unfortunately, I, I just, I, we will, there, there are no if, ands or buts. We will get your child the doll. I just have to find out where she is. She's roaming Suffolk County and she's somewhere. Um, so as soon as I find her, we will let you know. I'm, I'm hopefully gonna get an answer by the end of the week. Um. Don't, never apologize for asking a question, just so you know that, that, that makes me madder than asking the question. I tell my staff, that's it. I'd rather you ask the question than do it wrong.
And then Kelly's has the cookie chat too. So if anybody has questions that weren't in, at like answered today or you just wanna.
When you think of something.
Go more, yeah, exactly. You can join her for the cookie chat. We're gonna have the cookies. Um, 101 training uh, with, that's gonna be with Nicole in training. Um, that's gonna be posted soon and you can email, you could call us. Um, cause we wanna help you through this, cause we know it's not easy, right? Um, so we're gonna do whatever we can to help you to figure out.
It's hard for us. It's gotta be hard for you.
Yeah.
You know, and I mean, I, we know exactly what you're feeling, so. Um, but yeah, but, but by no means never think that you're not gonna get the reward for your child. We will make sure, I'm sorry, it's just taking so long, um, but we will, I, I promise, I will get you your, your rewards, okay? So I think we have covered all of our questions. Um, Janet, um, I know you're on the call, Janet Latham. Um, if you could shoot me an email with um, a list of um, all the email addresses of people who signed up for tonight. Um, so that way I could share with them their presentation for um, tomorrow morning and um, the allocation directions and things like that. Um, I just don't have access to the, their email addresses, so if you do that for me. Uh, if someone needs to exchange a cookie tag to, you suggest they make an appointment or just go to the cupboard. Um, shoot me an email before you, if you just need to exchange, shoot me an email and I'll let the cupboard know when and where you're coming. Uh, but if you're going down for a ketchup anyway, just bring your swap with you and they can do it when you get there, okay? Um, okay, I think, I think um, we're pretty good here.
Yeah.
Again, I just wanna thank everybody for coming. It's been, you know, really informative and um, you know, having Tammy here earlier was really nice too. Um, and thank you Jenna for being our MC.
Um, and we have um, Sarah and Jackie are here too, um, to just pull up, update.
Didn't even know.
There's more fun for everyone.
Sorry.
Um, so if, if Jackie, if you wanna go first or whichever can go first.
Sure. Hey guys. No, no problem. I am not as exciting as cookies, but I do have, I have just a very few things. Um, I know we've been on this call a bit. Um, so real quick, uh, membership is doing great. Uh, we are getting ready for renewal and we'll be talking about that more as the months come, but as of right now, uh, we're running some really great membership programs, uh, that seem very, very um, popular among the girls. One of them is Crafting with Carrie. Uh, we have Mythbusters, which is our science beast program and the Girl Scout Birthday Program, which is also coming up very soon. Um, and the even more fun part about this is that um, the wonderful ladies in the shop have sent us uh, information on fun patches that can go with each one of these programs. So if you've signed up for the program or you do sign up for the program or you have signed up for the program, uh, we'll be sending you out a flyer with a cute patch that goes along with the program that you can purchase online. Um, so just follow the link in the flyer and if you haven't gotten the flyer and you did sign up for the program, just reach out to us at customercare uh, dot, at gssc.us and we'll get that right out to you. Uh, beyond that, the other thing I wanna talk real quick about is our past president's scholarship. Uh, the past president's scholarship is given out to five ambassador Girl Scouts, graduating ambassador Girl Scouts, uh, so they have to be 12th graders. Uh, but it is an application process. Uh, we are accepting applications through March 6. Um, every ambassador Girl Scout should have gotten a letter in the mail, um, and an email. Uh, if they haven't though, no worries. You can go right onto our website and they can do the application uh, right on the website uh, and send it right into us. Uh, this is for, it's a $500 for five girls are chosen for $500 apiece. Uh, so it's a really great scholarship for those girls that are graduating Girl Scouts and headed off to college. Um, and real quick, we just have some training updates. Uh, the training calendar is up through March. You'll see we have Ask a Trainer Tuesdays coming. Uh, we have Troop Showcase coming, um, with a guide to the highest awards. Uh, we also have the highest awards trainings coming out as well. So lots of really great things coming out of training. Nicole's working really hard uh, to get you as much information on new topics as possible. Uh, we also have an adult awards training coming up on March 3rd. Uh, but again, everything is on the program calendar, so feel free to head over there and look and see what we have and sign up. If you have questions about training, you can email training@gssc.us. If you have questions about membership, uh, please just reach out to your membership specialist or you can reach out to me. Um, or just contact customercare@gssc.us and we can help you. Um, I hope everybody is warm and healthy and have a great night. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Jackie. And um, uh, Tammy went into some of the basics of what the new camp uh, is gonna look like. Um, Sarah, do you wanna start?
Sure. Oh, it's so dark in my area. Sorry. Um, hi, everybody. I, I'm not sure. I'm sorry I was late. Um, I don't know exactly what Tammy went into, um, but I do wanna just quickly go over some camp updates. Uh, we will be offering camp for nine weeks this summer, beginning June 28th through August 27th. It is going to be $375 per week, except for week two, which is only four days and will be $300. Um, because we will be having the groups operating in pods, they won't be interacting. Uh, we will not be offering a before or after care because those type of activities mix the children. However, we have adjusted the camp day to be from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM at night, just to make up for that. Um, again, because everyone will be kept in their own separate groups, we won't be offering additional amenities like horseback riding or archery, but we will be including archery as a free activity included in the price. Um, there will be no lunch provided as there has been in the past. Uh, girls will have to bring a bag lunch. We will provide two, obviously individually wrapped snacks. Um, but everyone will be eating lunch separately instead of all together in the cafeteria as usual. Um, again, with our goal of just keeping things as safe as possible, we won't be offering any bus transportation this year. Everything is strictly pickup or drop-off only. Um, just so that you are aware, if camp is something very important to your daughter this summer, we will be limiting to almost half of what we would normally have. So there will be about 120 girls that will be accepted per week. So again, if this is something that you use as, you know, childcare or just fun, um, whereas in the past you could call on a Friday and get in on a Monday, I don't foresee that being the same this year. So just something to think about. Um, we are going to be releasing the registration mid-March, so keep an eye out for that. Um, actually, because this is the cookie-themed virtual town hall, I just wanna remind you, especially if your girls have earned weeks of camp, you, you know, you wanna be on top of that. We're gonna be sending you an alert just so that you're prepared and ready to go. But once that's released to the public, if the spots are filled, they'll be filled for the season, so. Especially if your daughter, you know, we know there's girls that have earned possibly three weeks of camp, which is amazing and we want them to be able to take advantage of that. So as soon as you get an email from us, you know, we'll give you the details and the release date and you can go and sign up. Um, I believe that's it. We will still be offering CITs. Again, they will still have to take a training, which will most likely be a virtual one. And they will have to stay with their same group, so they won't be mixing and matching and going different places. They'll be operating with their group as a unit. Um, another reason we wanted this to be, we had to reduce the amount of people is we had to make sure in case of rain, there was enough covering for each group. Now normally, we could put 100 girls in Juliette Little Friendship Center. We won't be doing that this year. So we had to make sure there was enough space and enough lodging available for girls. Um, it will only be operating at Camp Edie. It will only be day camp. We will not be having sleepaway this summer. Um, which is disappointing, but we are just so happy that we can have something at all for our girls. And I've been getting tons of emails, so I know you guys are excited too. Um, and we are looking to pro- provide some sort of virtual programming. But that would be similar to last year where it's short amounts per day, not, not what you see with some virtual camps that span several hours. It would almost be more like small programs. Um, if you have any questions at all, you can email me. It's smoffatt@gssc.us. I'm sure everybody's exhausted, so I, I'll keep it short and sweet. Um, or easier, you can email camp@gssc.us. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
No problem.
Okay, so most of the questions are in the chat, so it must be raffle time. Uh, Maria, are you there?
Hi, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you, Melissa, for the wonderful presentation. Um, so we have five raffles tonight. Um, they're all cookie related. I hope everybody's excited. And we'll start with the first one. So the first one is a yard sign. And we have a pack of balloons and two cookie buttons. And the winner for that one is Barbara Waltman. Woo, Barbara. Then the second one is one of our new cookie aprons and a reversible child uh, mask. So on one side is a little catacorne and on the other side are cookies. And the winner for that one is Dawn Schlegel. Yay. Congratulations, Dawn. Our third raffle is we have a cookie beanie and then we have a handheld sign and there's a roll of banner in here. And the winner for that raffle is Amy Kane. Yay, congratulations, Amy. Our fourth raffle is we have a pack of our new cookie posted. Our new cookie money pouch and we have two cookie pencils in here. And the winner for that one is Melissa Teton. Congratulations, Melissa. And our final raffle for the night is, I have to see if you guys could see it, is we have a cookie cart right here. So the winner for that one is Crystal Lindsay. Yay, congratulations. And I will email everybody um, to uh, just confirm which location you would like to pick up at. You can pick the items up at either Comac, Edie or Riverhead. And have a great night and thank you again for joining us.
Thank you, Maria. Those are some great prizes. I hope you guys are excited. Um, so thank you guys for joining us. I know this one ran a little bit long, but I hope we were able to answer your questions. Um, I hope you guys were excited to meet Tammy and if you have any other cookie questions or any other questions for us, you can definitely email us or give us a call. Um, the, we are not always in the office, um, but the lines are open and they're connected to all our cell phones, so we are here. Um, thank you again. Uh, have a great night.
Thank you. Have a great night.